Trustees meeting to order at three fifty eight P M. Trudy, if you could please call the roll. Present.
Epic.
Good afternoon. Hang on. What's calling today's board of trustees? Sorry. I didn't want to hear yourself again here.
You're live.
It's a good thing.
Mac to me.
I'm here.
Nunley.
Here.
Pismo.
Here.
Sheets.
Stanger.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Zibble.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. If we could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Zibble, would you mind reading the mission statement, please?
Be glad to. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. I did forget to mention after the roll call, Mr. Epic is unable to join us today. He is traveling for business. Are there any public comments in the room? Seeing none. At this time, is our motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Board Meeting Minutes of October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pishmo. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Macme.
May I make a small correction?
Yes, certainly. We'll open it up for discussion.
Propose anyway. Under number thirteen, it reads, Mr. Swanson wanted to let the board members know that the contract move forward with the renovations can be stopped at any time. I think my comment actually was that the contract with the O R could be stopped at any time, not not the renovations itself.
The contract with the O R. Okay. Mr. Swanson wanted to point out a item to correct on item number thirteen of the minutes where it says, Mr. Swanson wanted to let board members know that the contract to move forward with the renovations can be stopped. It is the contract with the O R. So we will include that revision.
Do we need to make a motion? To.
Let's make a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two as amended. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pishmo. Seconded by Ms. Macme. At this time, Trudy, could you please call her all?
Mac to me. Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets. Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ben to introduce our first presenter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have with us Kristy Campbell from R L S. She has been the lead for the Giaga Lake Tran Coordination Study that was commissioned by ODOT. And just I know folks have asked me this before, R L S is a firm that Lake Tran has done some work with. It's not the firm we had previously hired for the strategic plan. In the past, they've done drug and alcohol training forces, the first kind of major study they've done. So I'm going to turn it over to Kristy, and she's going to go through presentation. And then if any of you have any questions, feel free to ask her.
Thank you. Waiting for my my little slide to come up, the music to stop. Thank you all for for being here today. Thanks. Thanks for your service on the board. And many of you, all of you, I think, spoke with us during the course of the study. So we appreciate your time to take a look at a proposal for coordination with Giaga County Transit. And I will advance. See here. There we go. Okay, so we'll start out with the statement of the problem. What problem are we trying to solve with this idea? And and really, it comes down to Giaga County Transit is a small rural transit system. They're challenged by the administrative responsibilities involved in transit system management. As you, as you all well know, F T A compliance and ODOT regulations and and grants management, transit management are significant. And Giaga County Transit is a small organization that is looking for some opportunities to partner in order to alleviate some of that. They've also had some issues with raising local match. And so ODOT initiated with R L S a study of what are the potential models for coordination with Lake Tran, building on what already has existed to to get everything into a better situation. Just real quick, R L S and Associates, we're a transit consulting firm. We focus exclusively on public transit. We are based in Dayton, Ohio, and we have a longstanding relationship assisting the rural systems in the state under a contract with ODOT. So that is what funded our time on the study. Just as background, as you know, Lake Tran and G C T have a precedent for cooperation. They have some great partnerships in place already with scheduling and dispatching software, as well as some maintenance services. And, you know, just just knowing that Lake Tran really is a regional leader in transit. It's gotten nationwide recognition on on some different things, a lot of strong technical capacity and expertise in transit. And that's that's part of why we're discussing this today is just the good job that Lake Tran has done in the past with managing their system. Just a little bit of information about Giaga County Transit, if you aren't too familiar with that system. It is a hundred percent demand responsive, so they run all cutaway vehicles. And I think one or two small minivans, but they aren't running big buses. They don't have fixed route service. They operate up to fifteen vehicles and peak service, and their annual budget has been roughly one point two to one point six million dollars operating over the last several years. They're directly overseen by their county commissioners and the county administrator, so they do not have a county transit board. Their staff is led by a director, Joanna, who who may be here today. She has been a very key player. She and Ben, we've had numerous, numerous conversations over the last six months. Joanna oversees a team of three managers, four scheduling and dispatching staff, about sixteen drivers, and a couple of maintenance staff. Something interesting and different about Giaga County Transit is that about half of their service is to the Amish community. This is a map of origins and destinations of Giaga County Transit trips, just to kind of show you where they're going. And they are truly all over Giaga County. They do connect up with Lake Tran at a couple of transfer points near the county line. Primarily, they're going in and out of Chardon, in and out of the southeast portion of the county where a lot of the Amish community is. And really, they're going in and out of the Cleveland urbanized area, which extends into their their county. You can see that in the green area on the screen. I have a couple of photos in case you've not seen their facility and their vehicles. They have a good sized facility, especially for a system of their size in Chardon, kind of located in the Giaga County Government Complex outside of Chardon, actually, just outside the the city limits. That is a picture of their vehicle and their logo. This is a couple pictures of the inside of their facility. They have a very good sized garage that allows them to pull a lot of vehicles inside. They have a bus wash. They have adequate office space for what they do, a good training room, really a good facility for a rural system. We'll talk a little bit about the process of the study. So as you know, we conducted one-on-one interviews with all of the board members of Lake Tran. We were able to do interviews with two commissioners of Lake County, as well as two commissioners and the administrator for Giaga County, as well as ODOT Office of Transit staff. We conducted tours of both facilities. We collected a variety of service data and budget data and provided summaries of all of that in the draft report, which I believe you received recently, as well as the executive summary, which was, I think, distributed a little bit before that. We also conducted a SWAT workshop on the potential models with with Lake Tran and Giaga County Transit staff. I believe that was in July. So taking a look at the interview feedback that we received, just to kind of give you some highlights, and you can find interview notes and more detailed summaries in the draft report. So in our interviews with the late commissioners, they were in favor of increased collaboration. They were not in favor of a total consolidation of the two systems, which is not what we're proposing. They made the point, which is, of course, vital, that residents must be assured that Lake Sales Tax stays in Lake County in spite of this coordination model. They felt that each transit system's identity should be preserved and just pointed to the need for a very well-executed communications campaign. If you all decide to adopt this model, to make sure that everybody, the riders, the general public, the staff of the systems, understand the ins and outs of the coordination model. With the Giaga Commissioners, we also obtained some feedback. They made the point that it is it is burdensome for a county of their size to administer the transit program. They've had some difficulty with local funding. The system runs primarily on section fifty-three eleven F T A dollars for rural systems, which is a fifty-fifty federal-local grant. And raising local funding has been a challenge for them, like a lot of other rural systems. The Giaga Commissioners view Lake Tran very positively. They they feel that it is a well-run professional system. They they feel that, you know, it's it's competently run and a positive for the community. They don't think there need to be big buses running down in Giaga County, and I don't think that either. It doesn't have the density that makes a fixed route successful. They feel, of course, that it's very important to maintain the system's service model of demand response service and to maintain its local identity. And I believe it was Ben and Joanna that presented a draft of an agreement, or at least a draft of the concept to the commissioners a couple of weeks ago, and they were very much in favor of moving forward. Okay, so potential models and the recommendation. So we 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 analyzed five potential models that I'll run through real quickly. So the first is status quo. You know, nothing changes. We kind of continue the good relationship between the two systems, some shared resources, but really just maintaining the status quo. Number two was for Lake Tran to become the grant recipient of the F T A funding, which actually comes down through ODOT and contracts with Giaga County for Giaga Service. So basically, Lake Tran would have a purchase transportation line item in their budget. It would be a purchase of service relationship, or Lake Tran would really take on that administrative burden. But the the service, you know, the the employees basically would remain Giaga County employees. The vehicles would stay, you know, titled to Giaga County and so on. The third one is that Lake Tran would be the ODOT and F T A grant recipient. Giaga County and Lake Tran would form a contract for administration and operation of the service. So this is in red because it is the recommended model. In this scenario, Lake Tran would absorb the G T C G G C T staff and vehicles. So there would be a new set of employees. There would be a new department of Lake Tran. But the identity of the service and the model for the service would stay as Giaga County Transit. The fourth model was that Giaga County remains as the grant recipient. But maybe we could find ways for them to contract with Lake Tran for more services beyond what they currently do today, which is to provide the scheduling dispatching technology and the heavy maintenance. But maybe there were more opportunities, not really changing the structure of anything, but could they take advantage of more services from Lake Tran? And then finally, number five is a total consolidation. So basically, no more Giaga County Transit. Lake Tran expands into the county. It's Lake Tran vehicles running around the county. And basically, you become a two-county provider. So that was model five. So the recommended model, model three, is represented on the screen. So that red dotted line between Lake Tran and Giaga Commissioners basically is a memorandum of agreement that says, you know, Lake Tran will operate Giaga County Transit under certain conditions with certain, you know, parameters in place. So there would be an additional unit of Lake Tran, and that would be Giaga County Transit. Here. Okay. Um. Let's see. I think I just said all this stuff. The local level staff would remain in place, but they would become Lake Tran employees. The branding and identity would stay the same. The service would remain running out of the Chardon facility. Also, ODOT has indicated willingness to fund the upfront costs. They're considering a budget, so I can't speak for them. But we know that there would be some upfront costs, of course, with getting this started, and that's a part of the model. So talking about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats associated with model three. The strengths. So Giaga County Transit needs local match, and Lake Tran is enrolled as a Medicaid provider. Enrolling as a Medicaid provider involves a lot of administrative burden and compliance responsibilities. It's a little bit like receiving F T A funding. There's just a lot of strings attached, a lot of responsibilities. And Giaga County Transit is not a Medicaid provider right now, and it would be considerable burden for them to become so. However, there is a big need for Medicaid non-emergency transportation in Giaga County, and this would allow them to operate that service and use the revenue as local match. It really would be a win-win for Medicaid folks and for Giaga County Transit. Another thing that would be helpful to them is that they would come under Lake Tran's equivalent service plan. You all have an ADA equivalent service plan, which allows you to purchase some vehicles that are not ADA accessible. And these are a bit more cost efficient to run, and in particular, these types of vehicles would be useful to Giaga County Transit in particular because of all of the service they do in the Amish community. So that's another strength of this model. Basically, there would be more economies of scale. You know, you all do a lot of good work with your procurements on on fuel and parts and other things, and economies of scale are always helpful, you know, for keeping costs lower. And then, you know, of course, the strong technical capacity for for management of the Giaga resources that I mentioned before. Some weaknesses with this model. Okay. So the whole idea of those jobs moving to Lake Tran is going to, you know, introduce some anxieties, and that's natural. We think that good communication can mitigate that as a weakness. What we're saying and what the plan is, is that workforce would be reduced over time through attrition in terms of some of the administrative staff members of Giaga County Transit. We feel it's reasonable over the five-year period that there would be some turnover in those positions. And we're not going into this recommending that any full-time staff positions be eliminated. Another weakness is, you know, and a lot of you pointed out, you don't want to overburden Lake Tran's management staff. You know, this is a system with a lot going on, and we don't want to overburden them and add another big project. I will say that I think that the staff, through many conversations I've had through Ben, are well-prepared. And ODOT also is reviewing a budget to compensate for startup costs. That budget's just under three hundred thousand dollars. Threats. Okay, so we covered this before, but a perception that Lake County funds are being used in Giaga County. You know, Ben is very clear about, you know, the intention to establish separate accounts for G C T revenue and expenses. This is all very trackable with the right accounting practices in place. You all have a sophisticated accounting system and accounting staff. And I think that through reporting and through clear communication, that this can be, this can be managed, and this can be, you know, communicated properly to the community. I think also that it will help that, you know, G C T is going to maintain its local identity and its branding. In terms of opportunities, there are lots of them, so we'll start with just some operations-related opportunities. We know that there's a lot of demand for cross-county trips, and we really don't have a whole lot of cross-county trips happening right now on transit. It's not that you can't offer cross-county trips without this coordination model. But I think that over time, having this level of coordinated management administration is going to make it easier, especially going down the road when, you know, Lake Tran would probably step in in later years with some of the trip scheduling for Giaga. I think that it will be easier to to pull off an offer under this model. Secondly, it does give Lake Tran some access to some backup resources. So you have a new driving staff. You have new vehicles. They have a maintenance facility. They have a mechanic. And, you know, you can use some interdepartmental accounting and transfers in order to maybe take advantage of some backup resources that don't, that didn't exist before. So I think that could be helpful. But really, where I think the opportunities are with this coordination model is that it really builds on your previous standout successes. I mean, you're doing a phenomenal job with the Dial-A-Rite service. I wish there was more Dial-A-Rite service around the state like you all offer. I think it's a really wonderful service. You had a successful tax levy. And I think that this can further kind of position Lake Tran as a regional leader in public transit. I will say that coordination between transit systems is something that us consultants are always talking about and advocating for because it offers great cost efficiencies. It's a great service to customers. Customers travel regionally. Nobody, you know, kind of stays in their county line unless they're dependent on a system that keeps them in the county line. And I think that for you to achieve this is is a feather in your cap. There actually has not been another rural system and existing rural system and urban transit system that have coordinated in this way in Ohio. And so I think that you would really be a trailblazer and and viewed, you know, positively by the Ohio Transit community for doing this. I want to talk a little bit about something called Mobility Ohio as well. So Mobility Ohio is an initiative of the state of Ohio, agencies that fund human service transportation. So that's not only ODOT, but that's also the Ohio Department of Medicaid, the Department of Developmental Disabilities, Ohio Department of Aging, J F S, and others. Okay? So all of these cabinet-level agencies have been footing funding into transportation for decades. And they finally started to take a serious look at consolidating some of their policies and some of their funding streams and some of their practices so that transportation can be better coordinated across programs. And this is going into a pilot project starting in two thousand and twenty-four that is being funded with funding from the Federal Transit Administration and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Basically, Mobility Ohio is going to regionalize human service transportation and operate it through brokerage-type systems based on regions that were identified as a part of the Mobility Transformation Study that the state of Ohio conducted in in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. I I don't have a lot of time to talk about Mobility Ohio very much today, but basically there's going to be a statewide rollout after the pilot of it. They're going to pilot it in southeast Ohio. And Lake and Giaga are in the same region, region ten A, which you see on the screen there. There's going to need to be some some kind of key transit systems that take a leadership role in those brokerage and human service transportation activities in that regionalization. And it really positions Lake Tran to to be a key stakeholder in that. This is a top-down approach. You know, it's 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 something that is intended to resolve all these barriers to coordination that have been present in locally-initiated efforts really over the last three to four decades. So it's coming, is what I want to say, and I think that this sets a precedent for Lake Tran to be a key player in Mobility Ohio. Also, just, you know, discretionary grants. So F T A puts out grants every year that are discretionary in addition to its formula funding. A lot of them prioritize coordination. They like to see transit systems playing along and making things better for the customer, making things more cost efficient. And, you know, every year, there's a new notice of funding opportunity. I think that this this coordination demonstration can can help with some of the kind of justification for further further funding from F T A to do, you know, innovation in regional transit. And then this is very small print, and I apologize for that, but you can find this information in the draft report. We took a look at what we'd anticipate the cost savings to be. And I think that we we looked at different areas where there there would likely be cost savings, and we only really pulled out the ones that we knew there would be cost savings. And in in terms of additional local match coming into the Giaga County system through Medicaid and attrition-based, you know, turnover and staffing and a little bit of a reduction in staffing. Over the five years, we think there will be a one million dollar savings. There probably would be more based on some of the changes in maintenance expenses and fuel expenses that would would come about through this coordination. But we're just focusing on the staffing savings and the increased local match. And we think that this can be spent in two ways, part of it to increase service in Giaga County, but part of it to shore up the administrative, you know, cost and workload that Lake Tran has. Just a little bit about the timeline of all of this. So we have drafted a memorandum of agreement that is being reviewed by Lake Tran and Giaga County Council. We would hope to see the memorandum adopted by both entities around February two thousand and twenty-three. Every year, Giaga County Transit has to apply to ODOT for their section fifty-three eleven and their state funding, and that would occur in the spring. So the idea is that if you decided to adopt this model, Lake Tran would actually submit the grant application to ODOT in the spring. Certain upgrades with their technology would need to happen, and that would also happen in the spring. And then the effective date for the transition would be July first, the beginning of the fiscal year. So that is all I have. I can stick around for any questions or comments anybody would like.
I have a question. You mentioned that we can receive the federal dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, where's the local funding come from? And where do we, where will we receive that? Is it?
So local match funding, part of their local match funding comes from ODOT, and so that would come through through to Lake Tran instead. If you're billing Medicaid and other forms of human service transportation, some of which they're already doing for their local M R D D and possibly another human service agency, so that that funding would remain in place. Giaga County puts in some in-kind contributions. You know, things like sidewalk maintenance around the facility and all of those things that you quantify and count as local match, so that would remain. Also, I think I said the the Medicaid funding, advertising funding is another one. So the local match would 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 continue kind of as it has and and then expand because you'd be able to build Medicaid.
Is there any that won't remain? Is there a question?
One thing that we have to look at is a little bit of the funding that's currently supporting the technology, the trapeze technology. I believe it's section fifty-three oh seven funding, so that we'd have to take a look at. But it's really not very much in the grand scheme of things.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a question. Actually, I have a couple. Maybe I don't understand exactly, but you said that Giaga County has a fifty-fifty match with federal grants at this point?
This, yeah, the system does. Part of it comes from ODOT and the and the sources that I just ran through.
Okay, all right. So they're not by themselves having almost fifty percent of the grants. My question was going to be, how does this affect that ratio? But I guess you just answered that.
It's it stays the same.
Yeah, okay. And then in the parade of horribles, it doesn't work. How does it get unwound?
It can be unwound through conversations with ODOT. So ODOT is aware and and, you know, endorses this model. So basically, if this doesn't work out, then Giaga County would need to go back to making that grant application and employing the staff members.
I think the the commissioners said this at their meeting, and then I've talked about it with Joanna. There'd be a an out clause, if you will, in the agreement, that if any one of us wanted out, you give notice. There'd be a an out clause, if you will, in the agreement that if any one of us wanted out, you give notice and you you leave in a certain period of time.
But in the meantime, we have moved employees from one county to the next. What happens to them?
Giaga County would rehire them.
And if they choose not to want to be rehired at Giaga County?
They would, I mean, they would need to hire, you know, staff to replace them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. I will turn the meeting back over to Ben. Or no, we're going to move into the budget at this time, I believe. Lisa.
So we put the budget together and I really want to do more of a sort of kind of brief review of what we do. Each department is kind of.
Each department is responsible for for their portion. So like maintenance, they have their maintenance accounts. They will submit a budget and they give it to me and then I will coordinate all the pieces and parts and put it together. So we have maintenance and then we have operations and then administration. But. When we redid the new account systems, which I talked about, when we started this year, we did at the end of last year during the budget process, we set it up. We kind of broke out. The admin piece. So you have IT versus just general admin versus HR. So they had their own account number so we could properly account and have a little bit of a better history rather than going through a specific account number and looking up. Who spent what and trying to coordinate that. So in the midst of all that, taking all that information and putting it together. And then in conversations with our grant revenues. With Andrea going over all the grants and stuff for next year. And I did mention throughout the year this year when I gave the finance updates that. All the pandemic grants and stuff that we received, those were used and those will be completed in 2022. So those will not be in the budget for 2023. So with all that, this is just a summary. We have a total operating revenue budget of $30,144,820 is what we're estimating for 2023. And our operating expenses are being estimated at $24,142,250, leaving an operating income of around $6 million. And then I'm going to go through, I have more detail, but I just wanted to give a a grand scheme summary of what we're looking at. Regarding the capital, which was put together by Andrea. We have our federal portion of our expenses are at 1.3 million. We have state funding at about 100,000 and our local match would be at about 900,000, bringing us to a total. Capital plan of about 2.3 million. And then STS, we're still estimating. It's basically pretty similar to last year when we did the 200,000. We're significantly closer to that this year. And I will also go through that in detail as we go through this budget. So is there any like overall general questions before I get into the little bit more of the detail for the budget? Okay, then we will start with our revenues. The numbers are small. I wanted to kind of break it out and make it similar to what you see when you see the Schedule B in your packet. This basically is just our operating revenue, which is basically consistent of all of our fares and any contracts that we have through Medicaid. Jobs and Family Services or our DD Department. Or through the DD, not our DT, but DT, DD, DD, non-medical transportation. And then our contract with Lakeland and then all of our fares. So our total fare revenue, which is what we get on the buses, we're estimating to be at $823,000. Which again, I will, I want to add this because. 2022, we still did see some of the effects of the pandemic, not as much as 20, obviously in 21. But probably at the very beginning, towards the end of the year, we've seen it pick up quite a bit more. So. We are anticipating in this 23 budget for things to be back to our pre-pandemic levels. And then as far as the contract revenue, we're estimating to be at one, almost 1.3 million. That's about. A 1.4% over our budget from last year. So I would say those are probably. Throughout 22 are probably closer to being. With the pre-pandemic levels. So. But if you compare it to what our projection, our projection is what we're estimating for the balance of 2022. Which if you compare it to that, we're at 3.9% increase under the total contract revenue. So our total operating is going to be about 2, 2.1, 2,120,000 is what we're estimating. And that's about a 9.8% increase over last year's budget and a 4.3% over where we feel will be. When we come in at the end of the year. Again, when we did this budget, it was based on what we knew as of August and September. Because we have to draw a point to use the numbers, our history and stuff to go forward to come up with what we think it's going to be. So on the second set of revenues, which sales tax is Lake Tran's main source of revenue to run Lake Tran. And that's at the very top of the line, total sales tax, we're estimating to be at about 23,512,047 for 2023. That's about a 3.7% increase over what we budgeted for last year. And based on where we project to be, it's about a 3% increase. So I would say that's pretty fair. There is a detailed sheet, Attachment D, that's in the packet that kind of gives you a 10 year history of sales tax. And the only thing I would ask that you keep in mind, and I do have it noted on there, is that we did have that new levy where we added the additional. Quarter of a percent sales tax. So it kind of makes the numbers appear to be a little bit higher. And I tried to show it in comparison, comparing equal to equal. To come up with a average growth rate. As far as state revenue and federal revenue. Those are going to be significantly less than 23 versus 22. And again, that is due to the pandemic grants. And it clearly stands out with the federal when you look at the American Recovery Act and the CARES Act, what we had budgeted for 22 versus what we have budgeted for 23. So total state revenue, we're budgeting about $893,773 and our total federal revenue, we're estimating about $2,729,000. And then the final piece, which is our miscellaneous revenue. Which would be like advertising, interest, miscellaneous income, maintenance, outside services, which is a new service that we offer to other. One of the things we do with Giaga, fixing their buses and stuff. We are going to have about, we're estimating about $890,000. That is significantly more than prior years and that's mainly due to the interest income with our cash balance being up due to receiving those pandemic grants. So therefore, we're coming in at a total of our non-operating revenue estimating for 2023 to be at $28,24,820. And when we add the two, the operate, non-operating and the operating, that's where we come up with our $30,144,820 in revenue estimated for 2023. So on the revenue piece, just to, just to make a couple notes, if you have to, if you for, just to remember for moving forward into 23. We're estimating fare revenue to be normal, back to pre-pandemic times for 23 for the whole year. Sales tax is Lake Tran's main revenue source. That's about 71% of our, all of our revenue. And then all the pandemic grants for operating was used or completed in 22 as of right now. Not saying that when we go forward, there couldn't be something else out there, but as of right now, for what we're budgeting for 23, we do not have those in there. And then our miscellaneous revenue is up due to our higher estimate for interest income. And of course, that will be dependent on what interest rates are and our cash balance for next year. So. If there's any questions on the revenue piece going forward? Yes, Donna.
Much question on the revenue pieces, identifying how this packet setup, page 24 of Board Packet. My page 24 is a pie chart.
It'll be the Schedule B. It should be 21, I apologize. 21 for the for the detail of revenue and expenses. Yes. The revenue, the pie chart for 24 is just the revenue pie chart. It does have the numbers down below, but for the detail with revenue and expenses in it, it would be the Schedule B would be page 21.
I got it. I don't mean to sound like I'm complaining or anything, but going forward, it really helps if those pages match up with what's in the packet. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, sorry about that.
Actually, I have one question.
Sure.
What do you consider, what year do you consider pre-pandemic? Would would be the last sort of normal operating year?
Well, 22 was better than 21. 21 was better than 20. But I would say that 20, 21, and 22. All saw a little bit of the, or was affected, let's say, by the. By the pandemic.
So 2019 would be the last sort of normal from your viewpoint?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I think it all took effect like in March of 2020. So even at the beginning of 2020, those first couple months were not so bad. It's just 13 just took a dive. I mean, March just took a dive and then it went down from there.
We weren't really impacted until we started the lockdowns, correct?
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, March of, March of 20 is when the lockdowns occurred and when everything really was dramatically different for us.
I mean, we estimated a lot of things in 22 to be back, you know, to pre-pandemic, although we knew that at the end of 21, it wasn't completely. You know, it was, it's hard to, it's hard to say. If I had to look at this revenue chart just based on our fares, I would say our fares on the buses. Were not back to the levels that they were. For pre-pandemic, you know, for 22. But if I look at the contract revenues, I would say those were. Better than the regular operating fares. Probably felt a little bit of it, but maybe not as much as our regular operating fares. I don't know if that's true or not, but looking at the revenues, that's what I could take away from that. Okay, to move on to the expenses. Okay, that will also be 21. But there is a, there is a pie chart on 25 for just the expenses, but the detail is Schedule B. So. For wages and benefits, and I'm not going to go through a whole lot of detail on here. This is more just of a summary because I'm going to go through the detail. And give a little more explanation on each one of these on the next slide. So our total expense estimating for the 2023 budget is $24,142,250, showing that net operating income of $6,2,570. When we look at that and we compare that to what we asked for in 2022, it's about a 7.5% increase over the 2022 budget. Obviously, 22, we didn't spend as much as we had budgeted just because things didn't go back completely back to normal like we thought they would. So when you compare it to the projection, it seems to be a little bit higher at 24.9. Although I will say this year, we have seen more dramatic increases. I think just simply because of the consumer price index being at 8.3%, so utilities are higher. And there's just different things that are just coming in a little bit higher than what. We would have considered normal before. So when I've done the budgets before, our normal expenses, 3% would be fair to say you would go, but I don't, I don't see it. You know, even utilities alone is at like 5%. So. And then we did make some changes in 22 for some unknowns that we really didn't know about. Like one of the. Things I think that would stand out the most would be switching our buses that we have for the fixed route from diesel to electric. You know, that was new in 22. So when I did the budget, I still showed it under fuel, for example. However, according to the uniform system of accounts, it really needs to be classified under utilities, which it is, and it's separated out like that in the proper account number. But to show apple, apple comparison when doing the 21 to 22 budget. We still showed it under fuel. I obviously will adjust that going forward for 23. So when I compare 22 to 23, because I have it already with the proper account number. I can just adjust that to show it so it looks more equal going forward. And we're estimating that to be around $400,000 for next year for the electric, for the fixed route buses. That's different. And I will, I do have a detailed sheet on the utilities when we get to that. So if we're okay to move on, we'll go to the, yes.
This proposed expenses here, I mean, budget doesn't include anything from geography.
It does not.
So if we did something with that, we'd have an amended budget.
That would be correct. Okay, so wages and benefits. We're estimating in total for wages and benefits to be at $17,234,000. That is about 71% of your budget. I mean, and that is normal for us. We are a service industry. So we provide a service and in order to provide that service, you need people to do that. So. And I think when we go, like, I didn't do it on here, but when I do the report each month for the. Financials, I always show like what the percentages are of wages and benefits comparing the years, just to show you that we're kind of within that. You know, we're still within that time, that frame, and that 71% is what we are currently too, even though we're estimating more. So there's some things that are taking place next year that are different than what we did in 22. The organizational chart was changed, which is Attachment E. It was approved on 9/26/22 by the board, increasing our full-time drivers from 103 to 110. So that obviously is an increase and that is to improve our service by adding those extra hours of service. So that's going to be a little bit more. We plan to be fully staffed. With our full-time and part-time drivers. Wages in our, in 22 were also topped out due to us having, you know, I think, which was felt throughout all industries, having a hard time being able to get people to work. So that was something we did and that was discussed with the board. I think it was about the middle. I want to say it was like right around June or July of 2022. So halfway through the year, you're at the top of your chart where the other half of the year you were not. So that obviously is going to increase when you do apple to apple comparison for the whole entire year. Just to give an idea on the Consumer Price Index, you know, in 2020, it was about 1.2%, 2021 was about 4.7%, 2022 is about 8.3%. And that was through September of 2022. Lake Tran is also self-insured through for health and dental through Health tip. Which is with the state and those are all transportation agencies that benefit from that. And our average increase is only about 2.5% for our health insurance, which is really, really good. I mean, that's, that's really good. So. And that's what it's going to be because we got that number before I prepared the full budget. So we could put that in there. We've been with Health tip since 2018. Lake Tran's current participation in its health plans, 58.6 of our health plans, 58.6% is single, 10% is employee child. 15.7 is employee spouse and 15.7 is family. And one of the reasons is for our insurances. You can insure your family, but if a spouse has insurance that is available to them through their work, they have to take that insurance. That's probably why you see higher single than any of the other plans. And then Lake Tran also offers a hospitalization incentive for our employees who do not take insurance. And we currently have about 13 people who participate in this program. Are there any questions on the wages and benefits before we move on to our services and software? So services and software, we're estimating to be at $2,121,000. So services and software, we're estimating to be at $2,121,500. It's about a 12.1% increase over what we budgeted for 22, and it's about a 21% increase if we compare it where we think we'll be at the end of this year for our projection. Our current services are estimated to have our normal increases, which we're estimating about the 8% or 8.3%, like the Consumer Price Index. We also have those transit service improvements that we're going to be doing. So in order to do that, we have to change, you know, and communicate that with the community about our extra hour of service in the beginning and at the end. I'm sure we'll have to update our website and reprint schedules, plus having a few more people, not that that's big, but you'll, you also have more people like to participate to be able to log in, do their time cards and all that, you know, there's just little extra costs in between there. And then another reason why this would probably be a little bit slightly higher than normal is in the past, due to changing the account number system. Marketing expenses were always located under miscellaneous, but in reality, when they're making changes to the website and stuff, that's really a service, or certain things that they do are supplies. So we had to re-change that a little bit. They still have some expenses under miscellaneous, but they should follow suit with all the other departments for services, supplies. So this will be, appear to be a little bit more, but in the miscellaneous, you'll see that go down a little bit. Is there any questions at all on the services and softwares?
Is the P next to 2022? Is that identifying this as the pandemic year?
Projection, projection. I just couldn't type it all on there, it kind of messed it up in the format if I typed out projection. So 2023B is the budget, 2022 is the budget, 2022P is the projection, which is the projection for what we plan to be at the end of this year with our budget.
When this used to be put together in a book for the capital and operating budgets, there was actually a little glossary page where abbreviations were put in an explanation. Next year, we might want to consider going back to that kind of thing.
Okay. I should have noted at the bottom of the slide, I'll do that next.
Well, that would, that would certainly be another alternative, if you put notes.
And it will be consistent like that all the way through, so the P will be projection all the way through. Okay, for supplies. We're estimating to be at $2,996,750 for our 2023 budget. That is approximate 1.7% decrease over what we had budgeted for 2022, but it appear, it's about a 33% if we go with our projection through the end of 2022. And again, this is where supplies would also have that fuel. And I mentioned that in the very first era where Lake Tran currently uses the following fuel types: diesel, propane, electric, and gasoline, but electric is transitioning to a utility expense in 2023 and will be accounted for separately from the regular utility costs. So we'll know exactly what the cost is for running or operating the fixed route buses. Lake Tran hedges its fuel costs to stabilize fuel rates. Fuel rates for 2023 are not yet known. We haven't entered into that contract, that will be in December. Fuel was estimated as follows for, you know, to come up with our number for 2023. So we have diesel, propane, and gas, and then we have our oil and lubricants for the buses. Miscellaneous supplies, so just to give an idea of some things that would fall under our supplies would be like our chemicals for cleaning, our office supplies or postage, maintenance supplies, parts, towing and fuel. So this number really can fluctuate a little bit. It depends on the life of the vehicles, you know, you know, for the, like, your older buses, obviously, if you have more older buses in your fleet, then it's going to cost more to repair those and stuff like that. So this number could fluctuate a little bit based on that. I mean, we're pretty good, we have a pretty good plan for replacing our buses. But your tires and stuff, we rotate those, and Keith, of course, has all those on schedule and stuff like that. So some years, there's more expenses for those than there is in others, depending on the years of buses that we have in our inventory. Are there any other questions on this one for fuel supplies? Okay. So for our utilities and insurance, we're estimating $1,219,000. Obviously, that looks like it's a huge increase, growing at 54.8% over our 2022 budget, and about 35.4% over our projection to the end of the year. But again, the main reason for that, and I kind of broke it out, so I put the dollar amounts on what we were estimating for util, just our normal utilities for our buildings, we're estimating about $317,000. And then our electric expenses for our fixed route buses for '23, we're estimating about $400,000. And then our insurance, which we are also kind of self-insured through Otrip, and we've been with Otrip as long as I've been here and longer, and we've always had good results with our insurance. And this is not just for the vehicles, but our property value and our property insurance and all that, and that's about estimated to be about $502,000. And that's a very slight increase, that's not even a normal 3% under that. And then for our miscellaneous expenses, they're broken out, like dues and subscriptions, professional development, which would be like travel for our employees or training, also for the board members, and then other miscellaneous items. And again, this is, you can see the decrease in here, and again, that's due to the marketing, because marketing used to just all be under miscellaneous. But to more properly account for it, how the national transit data, which we call NTD, we report this stuff every year in April, and changing those accounts to the uniform, to match the uniform system of accounts, they wanted those to be broken out appropriately. And then the last item that I have is our purchase transportation, and this is another one as a sign for pre-pandemic times. So the amount that we have down for 2023B for the budget is the $328,000. That also falls within our contract with them, based on our service that we had pre-pandemic. When we did 22, we thought that we would be closer to our pre-pandemic. We again used our contract amount at the $318,325. But if you look at the projection, we're closer to being at only $235,000. So, but that's definitely much higher than it was if you looked at 2021, because it was like 100, I don't know the exact number, but it was closer to like 100, and I would say 30,000 or 140,000 is what we actually spent. So of course, on this one, we won't spend, you know, only what we use, but this is a contracted amount that we entered into that was approved by the board, so we put it at that 328. And I think that it'll be pretty close. I don't think that, maybe at the beginning of the year, but they are coming back a little bit better than what they were. And this again is Breckenridge Transportation that we use for this. Only Breckenridge. The one thing that is different from the pre-pandemic would be Wick Cliff. We really don't do much with Wick Cliff on the purchase transportation piece, not saying we don't do anything with them, but we had that, and I'm sure Ben can answer that one a little bit more for us. But this, this strictly here is just the Breckenridge contract. I think the rest, I think Wick Cliff just kind of rolled in with the regular dial ride.
So purchased is Breckenridge alone?
This one, this purchase transportation is only Breckenridge. If we had one with Wick Cliff, we would have it in here, but that's the only one that we've been using for the last couple of years is Breckenridge.
Lakeland is a separate item?
Yeah, Lakeland, Lakeland is, well, we show that revenue on the revenue piece, but Lakeland is like its own route under fixed route, is considered part of the fixed route. Yep. Okay, was everybody, okay. So before I move on to any type of capital, that kind of completes our revenue and expense, and again, I'll, I'll just say it because it was on the first page, our total revenue is at the $30,144,820, and our expenses are at $24,142,250, leaving an operating income before depreciation of $6,2570 is what we're asking in the 2023 budget. This also is in the packet. Again, Andrea prepares this, and we took out, we didn't want to include as of right now, and I don't, I want to make sure that the board's really clear, because I do post it in here quite a few times. Even though we put this on here as part of the capital plan, if anything falls over $25,000, it is brought before the board to be approved. So this just gives you an idea of what our plan is for 2023 on what is planned to be spent. And obviously, the federal piece, and we have the local piece, and then we have our state piece. And on the side over here, I kind of gave an idea, most of our federal grants are 80/20. And there's a couple of things in here that we will be, that we are funding ourselves. But the total amount is $2,308,596 in total for the federal, the local, and the state piece. And I think with the federal grants too, Andre can speak more than I can to it, but there is a certain percentage, when you get your federal money, that you are required to spend on what we call enhancements, or things like signage and security and stuff like that. So those are things that we have, that we do have to do to keep up, they want you to maintain that stuff. Okay, so the capital plan is provided just as an overview and an estimate of the projects that Lake Tran plans to pursue for 2023. They're based, they're pursued based on our need and the grant funding that's available. The capital plan is updated monthly, and I do include it with my financial reports each month with the status of the grant applications and the project's priorities, because sometimes those things change. Our actual purchases and contractual agreements over 25,000 will be approved by the Board of Trustees on an individual basis, and that's required based on the circular. And Lake Tran will pursue all grant opportunities for which it is eligible. And then the 24 through the 27 estimates that have been included in the capital plan as an update for what is known today. The board's not being asked to pass anything for '24 to '27, it's just strictly a guideline, and it changes, I mean, but it's just no, it's things that we know today that need to be done in those years. And the main thing's going to be buses, we buy buses every year, so. Is there any questions on the capital plan review? Okay. And then this is the Lake Tran STS budget, it's pretty, pretty simple, but it is, if you look at, again, we're estimating 200,000 for the revenue, 200,000 for our expenses, but if you look at your projection, we are a lot closer than what we were last year. I know we were less than 100,000 in expenses. So our total operating revenue, where we're planning to be on our projection, is about 120, and our non-operating, which isn't much, it's just interest revenue on the money, which is $1,500. So we're planning to be at the end of this year about 121,121,500. So we have a little bit of growth there from what we're estimating for 2023 budget. And then for our wages and benefits, we're not too far off. We're going to plan on being around 73,000 for our wages and benefits together, 70,000 for wages and 30,000 for benefits. And we don't see much with the increases. Again, our property and casualty is still through Otrip, we do this also through Otrip, so it's, there's not a lot of growth there. So in total, it's about an 8.7% increase in our projection versus our budget for 2023 growth. So the board will be asked in December to approve the operating budget, the capital plan, and our STS budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions, or if after reviewing this, you still have questions, feel free to let me know. I do know it's a short month next month, we have, because of the holiday, so I will have to have everything prepared, I think, by the second week or third, first week of December.
Was there any plan to increase bus fare in '23? Any of the services?
I cannot answer that, I can't answer that. It is not projected in this budget to increase that fare. That doesn't mean that Ben doesn't have that in place to do that or is thinking about that. I know we, if I remember, Mr. Sheets asked that question about the STS, and it was mentioned that that would be increased. So that's kind of why I put the 200,000 as an estimate, but as far as normal fares in our operating budget, not at this time that I'm aware of.
Lisa, did we ever get the billing from the electric company straightened out?
To the best of my knowledge, I believe that we have got most of it. I think there's still a few straggling, but, and that was mainly for the buses. Had to do with the meter, I think, because at the new facilities.
What was the big number we had to pay them? Remember?
I don't, I don't think we're quite as high as we thought we would be. I want to say we're around the 150 to $200,000 mark right about now for the electric, for the, that's for the, for the buses. Yes, you're welcome.
To answer Ms. Dunley's question, there's, there is no plan in place to change bus fares. There is plans to change STS rates, but not public bus fares in, in the budget at all. That's something the board could consider. That's something to keep in mind, it takes a public hearing process, so it's, it usually is a three-month sort of endeavor from when you start collecting the public feedback all the way to implementation. So it's something that we could certainly talk about, I could provide some data, some projections, if you'd like, that's, that'd be up to the board.
Interested to know when the last time it increased was, just maybe just some history offline?
Sure, we could get you together kind of a list of prices over time, sure, it's no big deal. I believe so, yes. So the other thing is, this is a lot of information, we know that, sorry, it's a little dry, but between, why we present it now and approve it in December is so you have time to read it, ask questions, if you want to have a meeting with me and Lisa, let us know. We're happy to sit down with you one-on-one, go over the budget, answer any questions you have. I know for some of you, this is the first time you've been through it, but the reason Lisa said it's a short month next month is keep in mind, there's not as much time as normal between today and the December meeting approval. The other thing, I know for a lot of folks, government is a little different than private businesses, we have to have a budget in place passed in December, or we can't issue or pay any bills or pay any wages as of January 1st. So the budget for us is a little more, I don't want to say important, because it's important for business to have budgets also, but ours has some sort of guidelines that come with it that make it required for the board to pass something in December.
Any other questions for Lisa? Thank you very much, Lisa. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ben to do an introduction for the owner's representative presentation.
Yeah, so Bill and Tim told me they were really excited to listen to our budget presentation, so I put them at this point in the agenda. But this is Bill Gallagher and Tim Poole. Bill is from CT, Tim is from Tech Engineering. They are the two guys in charge of the owners rep process. So they did give an update to the committee, but they're here to give the board just a little bit of additional input, update as to where they are in the owners rep process for the, the plan review process, and I'm not sure if Gary wants to say anything before they talk, but that's, that's what they're here to do.
Your own.
Well, again, thank you for having us here, and obviously, we're going to keep it very short. We've been through a lot already, you've been through a lot today already. We're here to kind of summarize what we've been doing. Obviously, CT, we'll still see with tech. As part of the owners rep services, the first thing we were asked to do was the plan review, the documents prepared by Bowen Associates. Not only that, our follow-up services are going to be support during the bidding, services, construction administration, construction inspection, and obviously, project closeout. So that's the entire work. The plan reviews are very important parts, simply because it is the starting point to make sure we don't have problems through the rest of the project. We have specialists that did architectural review, structural review, civil review. Civil review, Tim with his areas of specialization did mechanical electrical plan review. All we can say is during this entire process, it's been a very comprehensive process. It's been a very inclusive process. We've had administrations meetings on three different occasions. We've met with the architect in two separate occasions. We did not want to present everything and all the dialogue associated with that. We do know that the administration has all the spreadsheets, has all the communications going back and forth. All we want to do is summarize this because we want to make sure there's a comfort level with the board that everything that we've done today was what was expected of us. And more importantly, anything that we've asked the design professional to do, they've done quite willingly with very little challenge nor very little anything except willingness to make sure this project is as clean as possible before it goes out to the public and the contractors so that we don't have issues as we proceed with the project. Again, we met with the architect approximately in mid-October, they made a commitment to be finished with their initial round of modifications by mid-November. We met with the committee last week and now we're meeting with the board. We feel we're right on track so that we can't get this project out to bid if approved by the board early next year so that we can hit that could early spring construction period, also to hit the right bidding market. This is the best time for bidding before the other contracts are starting to be released and we're hoping that we can get this project out ahead of everyone else. The review was complicated. It was some two hundred sheets. We did a turn sheet count with the architect on two occasions. We had our internal staff looking at their area of specializations, which varied between fifty and a hundred sheets. Tim, as his area of specialization, he had all the MEP, so that's where you have to set up drawings. I ended up getting the other half with the architectural and mechanical, I'm sorry, architectural and the civil part of it. We're very comfortable that based on those reviews plus the specifications, which was some over two thousand sheets. We've, we've kind of tweaked everything that we were concerned about. We've had various communications with the administration saying, why did you and the board want these types of items to be considered? We wanted to make sure the understanding of the process was complete and then we needed to communicate that to the architect. Because if we didn't understand it, our concern is always, does the contractor understand it? And when you're out in the field looking at something onsite and the materials aren't the right materials, what was expected? That ends up delaying projects, which creates more problems than we want to get into. That said, we're very comfortable that all that was done. Now, it wasn't perfect. We did submit a summary report. We're going to just present a summary report today of numerous things that were discussed. A lot of them were just clarifications. A lot of them were just, we want more information on the drawings. A lot of them were, we are uncomfortable with how you looked at it. We want you to do other aspects of this project to make it clear for the contractor. When we came in here, did our presentation, we admit identified that the phasing was a potential problem if it wasn't properly communicated to each and every tradesman out there. Tradesmen are very good at looking at their drawings and knowing what they're supposed to do. They're really not looking at how it's going to impact the user, how it's going to impact the other disciplines or how it's going to impact the schedule and cost. We made sure that there was plenty of information communicated throughout the drawings versus just on a handful of phasing documents or a technical specification that was very long and very detailed, and I think I'm probably going to be the only one that read it. Maybe, maybe Tim over here. In in doing that. We also had some other changes that didn't cost anything, but we thought were a better idea versus what was possibly considered earlier. One item was they show on the administration building addition that they wanted to put a TPO roofing on it, which is a certain type of membrane. The rest of the building was re-roofed with EPDM, which is a single ply sixty-mil membrane. We said, why would you change manufacturers? Why would you change systems when ninety-five percent of your building is one certain membrane? Let's use this other alternative, use the base contract, which was the EPDM. Again, the architect and obviously the administration thought that was a good solution and that change was made. We had some concerns regarding some building code issues, which obviously we're very versed at. The architect agreed with that and made those simple modifications. We wanted to see more clarification of coordination of the mechanical electrical systems on the architectural. We don't expect the contractors to flip through four sets of drawings to see what the plumber's doing, what the electrician's doing, what the mechanical contractors and what the civils doing. So we wanted those on all the architectural. Again, everyone was very receptive to these changes. So then there were the other ones. There are that did require design changes and we, we thought they were better for the project. We got the administration sign off on that and they thought they were better for the project. And we decided that we should make these changes in order to possibly save some money and possibly to ensure we don't have problems. One item was there was ballistic glazing in the entry and there were automatic doors for this ballistic glazing. Now ballistic glazing is usually three inches thick for the ballistic level which they identified. And it usually weighs about ten pounds per square foot, which as you could imagine is about ten times what is usually on a standard piece of glazing, let alone the cost is about ten times. And our concern was, well, that's a great idea to have ballistic glazing at the entranceway, but what if they get inside the building, which they can, then what do you do then? Are we really improving the project by doing something like that? And I think everyone realized that unfortunately, there's no way we could guarantee safety except for having a locked door and obviously by having good security. And I think that was a better solution than us trying to create a fortress because if it was only at the entranceway, then they can go to the windows and they could go through the back doors, a number of other ways. And obviously, that's the decision that was made by everyone. Another discussion that we had that I know the board had already was the use of metal siding on the garage addition, which I think back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when this project started, the cost of steel insulation was much more cost-effective. We're finding otherwise right now, but there is an alternate for the masonry exterior wall. And I think the only way we can find out which is the most cost-effective way is for bidding them both. So we're expecting that we may have to come back to the board and say it may cost a few dollars more or a few dollars less, but we may want to make a modification on that design. And with that modification is going to require us to look at possibly do we really want to stay with the standing seam metal roof now? Do we want to convert that into an EPDM roof similar to everything else? Do we want to consider taking the exterior guttering system and putting it on the interior? Don't want to get into those design decisions today. All I'm saying is that we will keep the board up to speed on all these changes. And obviously, anytime we can come up with a better idea, we do definitely want to present this because this is always a work in motion. And I don't think we're going to be finished with this for another eighteen months or so. Now, now that said, I had the easy part, I had the building, but I'm going to turn this over to Tim for a few minutes on his challenges.
Just a couple recommendations that I had in talking about the schedule and the phasing. You know, it's very complicated to keep a fire protection sprinkler system in service and and a fire alarm system in service while the building is occupied and under construction and phases. You need to go get that recertified by the fire department every time that there's a reoccupancy or a mobilization within the building. So I, the recommendation from our office was to call that out better so that the contractor knows that there's some additional scheduling responsibilities. So it's not just on one general contractor to arrange that. So that was one of our recommendations. The other thing we did see was maintaining the toilet facilities was very important and it wasn't called out as well as we would have liked on the plumbing drawings. It was stated in the phasing. But again, we wanted the plumbing contractor to be very aware that the existing toilet facilities needed to remain in operation while the phasing and the renovation was being performed. Another one has to do with the gas detection system in the back of the of the garage. You know, you invested quite a bit into a carbon monoxide system back there. It can be expanded. The drawings that we looked at initially showed a new system back there. So in the interest of preserving some money, we were able to expand and get the details on the drawings for expanding that existing gas detection system. So I think that was a very valuable add to the documents. And then another one was panel boards within the, within the office area were existing to be put back into service. And a lot of the panel boards are older generation panels, parts may not be as available for them. So our recommendation was to replace those panels, which also helped in the phasing of the project. And again, it was accepted very well by the electrical designer and the drawings were updated to show that. And then one thing that is a, is an issue for the facility is the generator system is an older system and they, the drawings that we reviewed initially showed the emergency lighting, which is the lighting that comes on for life safety for people to get in and out of the building. It has to come on within ten seconds and that's a code requirement. And the existing generator was not listed for that time period to come on that quickly and it wasn't listed for emergency. So we noted that and the designers went with a inverter battery system for the emergency lighting, which I think is a much better option. Get you a brand-new system and get you the code-compliant emergency lighting within the facility. But again, I'll echo what Bill said is these were recommendations rather than complete changes. They were made to enhance the electrical design and mechanical design of the renovation. And they were very well received and everything was included on the, on the new documents that we, that we were provided.
Thank you, Tim. And of course, the last thing we were asked to do was also to look at the cost estimate. The cost estimate started back in twenty, was updated in twenty-two. In a twenty-two did have an escalation value of four percent for escalation and nine percent for general conditions, which was scheduled through the middle of twenty-three. Because the project has stood almost a year, the escalation value was increased two percent and the general conditions were increased a total of three percent. So obviously you can see that as we go on, we know this is a longer project. Material costs are going to keep on changing as is labor and that has to be built into the contract by each and every contractor. So therefore, that number has been increased and obviously that number has been published in the report and we are here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thanks, Matt. At this time, are there any questions?
Dylan, Bill, and some of the changes that you guys made or recommended, you think it was pretty much a cost-neutral type? On the recommendations, or was there decreases in those changes?
What we did mostly was cost-neutral. There were a couple voluntary upgrades that we, we recommended, but there are also some that actually were credits. So right now, I did not think it cost anything in the dollar amount. The only thing that was changed in the estimate was escalation and the general conditions. So everyone felt pretty comfortable with the initial twenty-two estimate.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I'll make a comment and this will serve as my report at the same time. I think what we just heard explains why we needed an OR contract. You guys, I think, did a great job. We really appreciate it. And from what I learned from, again, today and from our meeting last week. There was a lot of thing, a lot of issues to take a look at, a lot of things to consider and I think it proves why we needed to make the decision to have somebody come in and function in that regard for us. I think the committee was very happy with the report that we've got and I think we're in great shape at this point.
Excellent. Thank you, Gary. Other comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you, everyone. Gary, thank you for the kind words.
I would just say before they left, I, you know, I thought Bill and Tim did a great job and I also just wanted to thank them for their time. Also thank the board for the commitment to hiring them. I think Gary was completely right with what he said, you know, I certainly appreciated this process. I know my team did and I think it, you know, just made the project stronger.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. And the next item is the committee report, which we just had. So thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. And I'll now turn the meeting over to Ben for our first agenda.
Yeah, so basically to follow up with Tim and Bill and Gary's committee report, we have the motion to commence the procurement process for headquarters. I did just want to real quickly say, you know, we are exactly on schedule where we expected to be. So we have completed the first sort of four parts of this. With the part being in November to go to bid, so if we go, if the board approves that tonight, we'll continue to be on schedule. I did, I know Bill mentioned it about the estimate. I thought it'd be beneficial to put that on the screen just so everyone sees it. I know it is in the report. But I also thought it was important to talk about it from a revenue perspective. So on the top, I have a summary of the grant dollars available with the required local match. So the two local match line items, one is the required amount that goes with those grants. And then that one point three million is the amount above the local match on the grants. So the total local dollars for the project would be just under six million dollars. The total budget, if you will, is about twenty-four and a half million dollars. So what we would get back in the bid process would give us real numbers on the expansion or remodel and the garage, those are listed separately in the procurement document. And then the contingency piece is something that happens after the bids are received. We add that on after that to get a total number. So this is basically the total number that CT provided with us. And I thought it was important to show the board the revenue that went with that. So that is the extent of the information I have for you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ben regarding timeline? Seeing none. At this time, is there a motion to approve the commencement of the procurement process for the Lake Tran headquarters renovation and expansion project? Motion made by Ms. McNamee, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pismo. Trudy, if you could please call her on.
To be Dudley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Stagger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Zippel.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We are sending this project out to bid now. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Lisa for the financial statements. Just so everyone knows, I'm just overcoming a sinus infection, so my, can't hear out of my left ear and I hear a lot of echoing, so I apologize if my voice is completely off today.
So the report, okay. This should be pages forty-four and forty-five. That's in your packet. Our operating revenue, this is through September of two thousand twenty-two, because we're two months behind. The operating revenue is at twenty-eight million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. We budgeted to be around twenty-seven million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand. Our operating expenses are at fourteen million, seven hundred and five thousand so far year-to-date through September. And at the chart on the bottom was kind of what I was talking about when I was talking about the budget too for twenty-three. The fares and miscellaneous, if you see it going across there, they're all pretty equal. We had six point five percent for our budget, but seven percent is where we're at. Sales tax is at sixty-two point five and federal and state is at thirty point five. And again, the reason why those are the way they are is because of those pre-pandemic or the pandemic grants that we got. So if I were to take the budget that we did for twenty-three and put that on there, you would see that your fares and miscellaneous would be probably be closer to ten percent. And your sales tax, which is our main revenue source to run Lake Tran, would be closer to seventy-eight percent and our federal and state would be at twelve percent. And I would say that would be pretty normal. So if you went back to two thousand and nineteen and look, those percentages on a percentage basis would be pretty similar. Again, these are, these are a little bit more distorted only because of all those extra grant revenues that we receive for operating. And I want you to know that it's hard to get grant. And I want you to know that it's hard to get grant money for operating. It's not, usually you don't get that. So this was like a one-time type thing. But again, our wages and benefits, um when we, when I went through that for the budget, it was like at 71%. And you can see just with our actual numbers here for twenty one and twenty two and what we budgeted for uh and the budget for twenty two for wages and benefits, right now we're currently at 73.4. So it's still within that same vicinity. With services and software in that. If we can move on to the second page. And show you, and these are the actual numbers that fit in with those percentages. I use these to do the percentages on the front. And our, we've received year to date for our revenue about 1.2% more than what we had budgeted. So we're pretty close with our budget versus our actual in revenue year to date through September. Um, expense wise, uh, we're a little bit less than what we had budgeted. And again, that's a good portion that's due to um just not being back to quite to normal yet. Um, the majority of that's probably on wages and benefits. And then a little bit on the services and the supplies. So we're about 12.7% less than what we said we would be. Two million, 136,984 dollars. Go on to the next. It must be STS. So before I move on to STS, is there any questions on our revenue expenses? Everything's just kind of normal. There's nothing out of the ordinary that's standing out other than there's no more grants. We did use up that grant money. That pandemic grant money was all in the beginning of the year. So August, I believe, was the last month that we finished up with those grants. So September, we might have any of that in there for the operating piece. And then for STS, um, again, we have 59,000 in revenue year to date. Our operating expenses are about 131,000, which if you look from twenty one, we're only at 43,000 in our expenses and 18,000. So you can see the big improvement just in twenty one to twenty two for uh STS operation. And I do attribute that all to the pandemic. And then if we go to the next page, it just gives you the detail on the expenses on the second page. Yeah, kind of breaks it out for you for wages and benefits and services. So we're significantly less than where we said we would be in twenty two versus uh the budget for revenue, or 60.9% less than where we said we would be. And on expense side, we're about 12.4% less than where we said we would be on the budget. But I think we can just see that the effects of that pandemic still filtering through in twenty one and twenty two. Hopefully twenty three, we're, we'll be 100% back. Any questions on STS? Okay. So our cash balance, um, as of September two thousand and twenty two, um, that's on pages forty six and forty seven. Uh, our operating, uh, we keep at the 7,987 capital. We have obligations that we have not spent yet at the 2.8 million. Thirty-three is just the other revenue. We have set aside and then STS balance uh is 557,000, giving us a total cash balance for all of our operating and capital. STS is 45,357,689 dollars. And the last, but not least, is the capital piece. And this is on page fifty one. So for two thousand and twenty two, I always like to break out that prior just to give, because capital projects do take sometimes multiple years, so. But out of all of this, our total for two thousand twenty two through two thousand twenty six, twenty seven, for what we know, um, we have 60.9% of federal at 15,358,192 dollars. Our local share is about 36.2 at 9.1. And the state is a 720,000 for a total of 25,186,431 dollars. And I did separate out the headquarters piece, just so it's in there. There's any questions?
Any questions for Lisa? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Lake Tran's September twenty twenty two operating and STS financial statements subject to audit and capital plan review? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Zibble, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Back to me.
Dudley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Stagger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Zibble.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Our next item is to discuss discuss the gas contract for twenty twenty three.
Evening. Oh, thank you. Um, so every year, Lake Tran spends a lot of money on fuel. And so um we go out to bid in a joint contract with our transit peers here in Northern Ohio. So there's seven of us. Um, and um a little bit about, we'll probably see these slides a lot going forward. Um, this is a, an invitation to bid, um, because we know exactly what we're buying. Um, it's a certain specification of fuel. Um, fuel is easy to acquire. There's lots of vendors. Um, and we don't need any, we don't need to talk to vendors and get questions um and have a lot of back and forth. Um, so um we can go to the next slide. And so we have exact specifications, which means we are going straight to an invitation to bid, which means um the uh lowest price at is awarded to the responsible and responsive bidder. And go to the next slide. This is very routine. Um, we've been participating in this joint procurement for fuel since two thousand and four um with our uh seven peers in the area. Um, Parta in Portage County is the lead on this joint procurement. And this procurement is different than um some of the other ways that we procure procure goods and services. We are asking the board for approval to enter into a contract on December seventh. So um we do not currently have the bids. I don't have that information to give you. Um, and the reason we have to do this is that the way the contract is structured, because fuel is so volatile in its price, we have to enter into a contract on that same day that the bids are due. Um, otherwise we have to renegotiate the bid or the price with the low bidder. So in order to take advantage of uh the low pricing, um, we are asking for authority to um enter into a contract on December seventh. Um, at the uh last board meeting, a few board members had questions about um kind of uh how this, how the pricing kind of works out. So I looked up the um average um national cost per gallon for diesel and gasoline and compared it with our twenty twenty two bid pricing. That's this chart here. So red is diesel and blue is gasoline. Um, and the dotted lines are the national average and the solid lines are what Lake Tran paid. So in twenty twenty two, given how high gas prices and diesel prices went, um, it, this was a very good contract for Lake Tran. And then in the next slide, I have um historical pricing back to twenty seventeen. Um, looking at the um, again, the average uh cost per gallon for diesel at um nationally and the average cost per gallon of um gasoline versus what Lake Tran paid in a um unit price uh for the entire year. Um, so Lake Tran did, the way this contract is structured is the um bidders bid a single price per gallon for the entire year. So the price does not fluctuate for Lake Tran. Um, even in twenty twenty, when um prices plummeted due to the pandemic, Lake Tran um was still uh, this was still a very valuable contract for us because we bid the prices out. And in bulk, by participating with our neighbors, we get economies of scale. Um, and we all benefit from lower prices. Um, so in conclusion, we benefit greatly um by procuring fuel in this manner. We have a lot of operational efficiencies also by having only one fuel vendor for the year. So um we are requesting approval of the attached resolution authorizing the CEO to enter into and execute a fixed price contract for diesel fuel and gasoline for calendar year twenty twenty three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash zero two four authorizing the CEO or his designate to enter into and execute a fixed price contract for diesel fuel and a fixed price contract for gasoline for calendar year twenty twenty three? Motion made by Ms. McNamee, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Back to me.
Dudley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Stagger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Zibble.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ben uh to talk about where we are at with Joga Transit and uh what the next steps would be.
Yeah, so I just wanted to have a brief conversation. Um, you know, I've talked to all of you individually. You now heard the presentation from the consultant. Um, sort of where we are at, I'm actually gonna go to my um timeline here. Where we are at is the Jog County Commissioners have indicated their desire to move forward into the sort of quote negotiations process. And so um that's where we would be in that step. Um, the way I would perceive that to go, um, and I would, what I'm looking for tonight is some sort of, you know, general feelings. Yes, we like the idea. No, we don't like the idea. There's no vote required. There's no official action required. But um to move to the next step, there would be some expenditure of funds um through the use of of Brandon and his firm to do the um the negotiating process. So uh we are at the point where an MOU needs to be written. Um, there are some samples, you know, you heard Christie say this is the only um urban and rural example of this in the state. There are examples of rural to rural and urban to small urban. So there are examples of this type of work that exist. There are contract samples that exist, but not exactly the same, but they're similar. Um, and so to really understand, I think, if we could come to an agreement, we have to start to negotiate an agreement essentially. And so from from my perspective, kind of what we, what what I need to know and what Brandon is gonna need to know is does the board think it's worthwhile to move forward with expending not a huge amount of funds, but some funds of of Brandon's time to really start writing a document that we can share with the Jog County Commissioners and say, hey, what do we think about this? Um, I think that we are best positioned to take the lead on that um for a couple reasons, you know, one, we have Brandon. Two, we want to be in the driver's seat for this to make sure the agreement is is what we want. Um, you know, I think some of the key things that I've heard from all of you, which I share the same concerns as keeping these two organizations separate with a good firewall financially and contractually, um making sure identities are maintained and and kind of all those things we've talked about individually as as a theme. And so um I think that the really, the only thing left to do is to to start talking about that MOU and start start writing it. Um, that doesn't mean at the end of the day that we are gonna go forward with this. It doesn't mean that we can come to an agreement. But there's not really a good way to start understanding if we can come to terms without putting the terms on paper. The other thing I wanted to share, I know there was some conversation with all of you about what would, what does this mean to the organization? What does it look like? So th- this is just a sample. The the way the structure is that we've discussed is that Giaga would essentially be another department inside Lake Tran. So you know, the blue is our existing org chart. The green is what a Giaga org chart could be. So Joanna, the Director of Jog County Transit, will become a department head. She would report to me and the structure that the board is used to would be maintained. Um, the main thing you'd have to think about is financially, you know, right now we manage STS in its own bubble. Giaga would be also in its own bubble. So there'd be sort of a second bubble created. Um, but managerially and operationally, it would just be sort of a part of Lake Tran that's branded separate and does some different things separately. So those are all great concepts and that's what we want, but we need to be able to put that in writing and make sure the Jog County Commissioners can agree with us in the same way. So I think that, you know, because we have dedicated legal counsel who does a great job for us, that it would be best to have him sort of take the lead um to help us do that. And so I just wanted to see if that's, if the board was thinking the same thing or if they're like, hey, you know, you're crazy. We don't like this. Uh, just sort of, you know, where we are, we didn't want to take that next sort of step without getting some, you know, indications from from y'all if you uh think it's a good idea or or not one worth investing time in.
Okay, so um although you said a lot there, Ben, I think this is um for purpose of the discussion right now, I think it's a lot simpler than what you made it out to be. And I think it is just a discussion of, is this something that interests this board? And then if it is something that interests this board, the next step would be to um start a more serious discussion through an MOU with Giaga. Um, so why don't we start with a little bit of discussion on if this is something that this board is interested in doing or not doing? Yes, you're interested in doing it.
Functionally, Ben, how confident would you be that that the the department would be a standalone functioning department? How much bleed over from existing current operations would be required uh in your estimation to uh to support that? Or is it truly a standalone department that does not, that won't need any help? Which, you know, I mean, that's a silly question because the truth is, it's one organization at that point. But but I think you get to just where I'm trying to go. You know, how much, how much bleed over could we expect? Should we expect?
Yeah, so the main areas where bleed over will occur will be um finance, compliance and development, um IT, um a small amount of operations in the beginning. Operations role will grow over time with the idea being um. One of the reasons I think this is good for us is it's a way to generate income. Over time, we will take on some more roles from them, but on a daily basis, they're they're relatively independent. They're not going to require a lot of oversight from us. Um, you know, there's gonna be bumps in in the road, especially in the first year where it's gonna take more of our time for sure. But once it gets up and running, you know, think of it like they have 25 employees for payroll. We already process a payroll of 275, so it's a very small component um in regard to that. So there will be some bleed over, but we'll be compensated monetarily for it. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned and I let any of my team kind of answer my uh or or expound on this. Is I think everyone here is excited to be able to do this. And so even if there is a little bit of work that's required, uh people are on board with doing it. The one area that I would probably be the most concerned about is is IT. You know, as we've talked about resources uh in past meetings, um, you know, making sure those two things are connected are important to me. I don't think it's anything that's um, we need to be really worried about, but that would probably be the one that would be, i- if I had to rank my concerns, that might be number one. But um I don't have a percentage or anything for you. I I don't, I don't think it's something that I'm very concerned about after year one. Year one's gonna be a decent amount of work. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Almost exactly what I would have expected.
Okay.
So I had a very similar train of thought. I said, um, the notes I wrote here was how much of the Lake Tran directors' time would be used on this and other Lake Tran staff? Because it's, you know, great that Lake Tran can make some money, but there's only so much time in the day. People only have so much capacity to work. And then the other thing that I wrote down here was, um, what will this mean for Lake County service? If directors and other people in the agency are spending a little bit more time on Giaga County, how does that affect the Lake County residents and Lake County service? Those were my comments that I wrote down.
Um, I think one of the most important things to keep in mind right now is that they are really a standalone functioning department today. They don't have a lot of commissioner support. They operate in a in a bubble on their own already. And so you're, it's not that heavy of a lift to transition it to us. Um, in year one, it's it's definitely gonna be some work for my folks and, you know, uh luckily, we're all salaried, so sometimes if we work more than 40 hours a week, that's what we do. Um, but I don't think it's an amount of work that we should be afraid of because it is our specialty. And the other thing is, you know, the load gets spread across a lot of people, so a lot of people do a little bit of work. So um as far as protecting the Lake County residents, that's obviously always gonna be our first concern. Lake County is what Lake Tran is, so we can't ever allow our eye to drift from that objective. So um that'll have to be in the back of our minds. We'll have to make sure we remind ourselves of it as we go, that Lake County is still the reason we're all here. I think the thing that that I would also add to that is I think this ultimately does benefit Lake County residents being able to I think the thing that I would also add to that is I think this ultimately does benefit Lake County residents being able to, you know, after a couple of years, do some cross-county travel. So I think once we've got one or two years underneath our belt, the citizens will really start to get to benefit from this from some different transportation options they don't have today.
With the money that ODAT's giving to startup, is there, I think there should be an opportunity for the directors to glean from that. I don't know if it necessarily requires a salary change or increase, but you know, maybe year one, it's a little bit higher than it starts to, you know, fade as that goes or some of that additional money since it's not being taken out of taxpayers or Lake County can be used for maybe additional IT support or something like that. So getting creative with the money that maybe ODAT is giving us would be interesting.
Yeah, that was part of, that's a great comment. That's part of what we put in the budget was some of those initial expenses, some of those. There was some extra support with Cornerstone for Tony to do some more work with Geogga. So we've covered some of that. I'd want to maybe have some more detailed discussions about the salary and the compensation pieces maybe at a later time, but I think that could be a good idea.
Mr. Legal Counsel, are we allowed to do this? But you know, I guess I haven't heard anything regarding our limitations, so to speak.
Presumably, yes. I did look at the revised code briefly. I'm not aware of any limitation. I would look at it a little more in depth and let you know accordingly. But I'm not aware of anything that prevents it. That was one of the things Ben and I talked about initially at one point, too. I had some of those reservations. I haven't seen anything. But I would look into it further.
A number of my reservations over this were the branding, which you've taken care of. Some of my concern also was the commitment of commissioners to make sure that they were on board with doing all this, too, just in case there was anything that politically might have come up regarding this. And I think that's all in line at this point in time based upon what you've told me and what Christie told us here today. So I have much more confidence in going forward with it.
Go ahead, Eric.
After you, Kim.
I was just gonna say, just to reiterate, I mean, I would agree. I think any concerns that I had has also been a swashbuckler, the presentation that she made and conversations that we've all had, conversations that's how it would been. The only thing that hasn't been mentioned that I would add is just just the focus on communication for Lake County and making sure that the communication and the branding is hit just right because I just I have, I'm concerned of the image of how that would look, but I, it sounds like everyone is aware of that. And it sounds like that's something that will be addressed, you know, right from the start. I know that Julia will be on that from the beginning. And, you know, I'm sure it'll be taken care of, but that was my only, the only element that hasn't already been said as far as concerns.
You stole my line.
Oh.
Yeah, one of the things that Julie and I have already talked about a little bit is a communications plan. So we really can craft that message correctly, really make sure people are on board with it and understanding of it. So I completely agree.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Mackman?
I just wanted to comment as far as the communications plan. I think that they're understanding that our revenue is not going into this, into Geogga, and that it will not impact our service. Those are probably the two key points to make them comfortable with it.
Is that Geogga County Commissioner's vote? Is that like a meeting they're having?
It would be, yeah, they would.
Align with our vote.
I don't know what their published meetings are yet. In my opinion, they would need to vote on it before I brought it to this board. So because our meeting is at the end of February, will probably be easy to do that, but I would want them to say, let's do this. And then for us to sort of accept that as a response. So not sure what the date would be yet, but I would have to wait till they publish their meetings in January.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Donna.
I just wanted to ask the question. Everything I've seen indicates that Geogga's model is that the Board of Commissioners is basically over the system with a Board of Trustees in between. Is that correct?
Yeah, so they have the same model of the job I was at last where as the Transit Director, I reported to the County Administrator as a department head and then rolled up under the Commissioners. So that's the same structure where their Director of Transit Joanna would report to their County Administrator and then up to the Commissioners.
And that structure does not change.
In this model, no, it would change. She would report to me.
She would report to you. So how is keeping the Geogga system separate in a lot of ways? What does the Geogga Commissioner's role become?
Their role would be defined in the MOU.
Okay.
So they wouldn't, they would no longer have a daily sort of finger on how the system operates. There'd be, you know, rules put in place for us. And obviously I would keep in communication with them and talk to them about what's going on regularly, but they wouldn't be the decision-making body any longer. It would be this board.
Mr. Dines?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, if I may. Clearly, a memorandum of understanding helps. The consultant proposed a memorandum of agreement. I'm not taking issue with it, but I don't think that's the appropriate vehicle for this. My understanding would be, I think what's appropriate is to have a memorandum of understanding between the parties, then subject to a definitive agreement, which would specify and spell out the actual terms of what everybody's expected, where everybody's role is, termination provisions and otherwise. So the MOU would function similar to a letter of intent where the party's intents are specified and made known to everybody, known to the public. The board could then take action pursuant to a review of that memorandum of understanding. And then we would enter into a definitive agreement. That would be my suggestion.
So your change to that timeline would be Geogga County Commissioners vote on the actual agreement at that point, not the MOU?
Yeah.
And then the same for the Lake Tran.
Yeah, presumably we can get this done pretty quickly. The memorandum of understanding is already in place in a sense that the consultants provided us with a document. I've looked at it revised a little bit of it. I'm the guy who changed it to understanding because I don't like the term agreement right now. And then we could act upon that and get this process done within that timeline without any problem. Subject to, of course, the board's approval.
MOUs are relatively common in the industry.
I know. Yeah.
Everything Brandon just said is why I think we're better positioned to do it.
Well, my temperature of the room is I don't hear anyone saying that this is a bad idea. So I believe we're okay to move forward with drafting an MOU.
And we'll circulate copies of that and everything with the board as it moves.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, is there a motion to enter into executive session to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment pursuant to Section 121.22G4 of the Ohio Revised Code?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pishmo. Seconded by Ms. Mackman. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Beck to me.
Ludley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Stagger.
Yes.
Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to enter executive session at 5:57 PM. The board will invite Mr. Dines, Mr. Capel and Lisa to stay as well.
For our viewers, we will be back when this is complete.
Let's turn the meeting over to Ben for the six-month look ahead.
All right, I'm gonna go quick. December is approval of the budget. We also have the replacement floors, sleeper cleaner. It's out to bid right now. I know we got, or we, the bids are coming in. I know we've got at least two bids, which made me very happy. We'll prove the annual meeting calendar. January, we have the Title VI Plan required by FTA to make sure we treat everybody equitably. The schedule has the HQ Construction Project Contract Award that month, that month. Yep. The vehicle lift, we still have that tentatively scheduled for January. We're still going through the bid process, so there is a possibility it'll get moved back to February, but we're not 100% sure at this time. The Menor High School bus stop is out to bid right now, so we should have the bid coming back on that. In February, we have the uniform agreement. We talked about this one a little bit last time, but the vendor asked for a 45% increase. We said, no, thank you, and put the contract back out to bid. So I believe the procurement process, the documents are just being completed. So we expect that to be on February's agenda without too much issue. March is State Grant Authority. This is the routine action item we do every year to give a story to apply for state grants. April is the PTASP, which is the Public Agency Safety Plan, which is a document required by the FTA to set our annual safety targets. We don't have any actions for May at this time. Anybody have any questions about any of those things? Cool. Moving on to my report. The main thing I want to go over with the board today is talk about October and the couple of weeks after that that have happened so far this year. October was a very difficult month for us, particularly the end of October. Ridership was up quite a bit more than any of our projections and expectations. And service quality suffered because of it. So ridership has been very unpredictable. I wanted to show you this graph mainly due to the unpredictable nature of it. So in the past, we could usually say these months are gonna be busy and be prepared for it. You know, typically it's March and October, and we do our best to estimate those things and where they're gonna be and how many drivers we need. So this has January 20, all the way up to October of '22. You can see 2020 was really crazy. We had a massive drop in March. Then ridership went back up almost to normal on fixed routes in August, September. Dial-a-Ride had a similar spike, fell off a little bit. 2021 stayed sort of flat. We saw increases more like normal in March of 2022, but they declined again pretty quickly like we expect them to. You know, we'll see a one-month peak and that's not, that's not too unusual. You'll have a one month where things go real high and they'll kind of fall back down. What we saw this year, starting really in August, was an increase that kept going. And so as we project our driver needs and, you know, try to keep on top of it with training, that kind of increase like that at the end of the year is unusual. And so when we were in October, we were not staffed appropriately. Part of that is because we've been, you know, we've talked about hiring challenges in the past. We've been catching up from those. But we just didn't have enough people to provide the level of service that we needed to do. So we found ourselves in a really bad situation with on-time performance particularly. So this is a graph of on-time performance in Dial-a-Ride. Our target is to be in the high 80s, low 90s. And you can see all the way back, this graph starts at the beginning of August. We really weren't hitting the goals we wanted to in August. You see the first week of September, there's a significant dive. That, that's also the week of Labor Day. So people tried to do four days of trips in a five-day period. So seeing a decline that one week is not that surprising. But we really couldn't recover. So on-time performance stayed in the 70s. Then in October, it took a dive, probably the lowest since I've seen, since I've worked here for 10 years. Our on-time performance went down into the 60s. That's, that's pretty bad. We were really struggling. The drivers were, you know, working overtime. People were stressed out. We had customers getting to appointments two hours late. Things were not going how we want them to at that time. Now, usually, you know, you see one week of that and you don't fret. You don't make, you don't make organization ridership type changes when you see one week of blip. When you see a trend like this, when you can't get back up into the 80s over this many weeks and then it gets worse, I had to make a decision that I didn't particularly love to do, which is put a cap on the number of trips we could accommodate. So normally, we operate with essentially no capacity limit. We've done that for years. It's really not the best business tactic. We've talked about getting rid of it for years. Our plan was always to staff up so that it didn't affect people, institute a cap, and then let it be so that it kind of naturally was in it, sort of worked itself out. We found ourselves in a situation at the end of October, beginning of November, where that really wasn't practical. On-time performance was too bad for us to be able to keep doing that. So we had to switch how we scheduled Dial-a-Ride to using first come, first served, which is the FTA sort of preferred method, which is whoever calls first gets their trip first. We've been doing that for certain types of trips for years. It's not new, depending on what you're doing. But we instituted it for everything starting November 1st as a reaction to these things. So that's when you see on-time performance go back up. So overall, you know, there's been some, some people that have had their trips denied, which isn't something we want to do. But this is a short-term sort of situation because I want to talk a little bit about, about, so that's kind of the negative about the positive. So this is an updated hiring chart from what you saw when we were originally having hiring challenges. So the changes we made with wages, topping people out so they start up in that $20 range, has resulted in new drivers coming in the door. The problem is we're still behind the eight ball with the number of people that are actually road-ready. So while we've been getting people in the door, they haven't completed training. Training is, you know, a pretty long process. It's three months. So even those drivers we hired in October are only just going on the road. So we kind of didn't quite get to where we needed to be for ridership in November. What this does mean, though, is that we shouldn't see the same challenges going forward that we saw in October because we have been catching up in staffing. But I thought it was important to let the board know that that was not something that, it's not normally the process I like to take with a change like that. Usually I prefer to talk about it multiple months in advance with the board and have some more detailed conversations about what it means. But this was one of those decisions that was, you know, it was almost an emergency where you see, when you see on-time performance that low, there's not a good solution. You know, it's either you either do less or continue to do what you're doing poorly. And after a lot of internal conversation, we said, what would, if you were a customer, what would you rather have happen? Would you rather have us tell you, hey, we can't get you to the doctor today? Or would you have us say, sure, we can get you to the doctor, and then you show up to the doctor two hours late? You know, our opinion is it's better to know in advance if you're not gonna be able to do something than show up late. So the challenges we saw with this on-time performance in late October shouldn't be a problem in the future, and we should not have the same challenges we did because we're gonna, our hiring will, once they're done with training, we aren't gonna have the same challenges we did. But I just thought it was important to let the board know that it was a little bit of a rough October. It was rougher than we expected. You know, seeing ridership do this, see a sustained upward trend is something that we really haven't seen since the pandemic. So I think that means that, you know, ridership is gonna continue to go up, but it's too early to tell if this is a, if we're getting back to our normal trends in ridership. But I will say, you know, everyone talks about how the economy could be slowing. That blue line is local route ridership or fixed route ridership. Usually fixed route ridership is an indicator of economic health. So when fixed route ridership goes up, especially for a community like Lake County, it does usually mean there's some slowdown in the economy. The folks that are right on the edge of affording a car can't afford a car anymore and they're riding fixed route. So it's obviously a trend. We're gonna keep monitoring, keep everybody up to date on. But I just want to kind of go over that. I know it's a long meeting. I'm sorry I have this long narration at the end of it, but I don't expect this to be the same situation where we get back to our traditional busy month in March. But yeah, this has kind of been a little bit of a struggle recently with just having the right resources in place. The one thing that this could very well mean, if this trend continues, we will have to start really talking about buying some more vehicles to expand Dial-a-Ride service, which we, you know, were gonna do a long time ago. Then we had a pandemic, but if this continues, we're gonna be back into that type of conversation. So. Yeah.
So this is equipment or it was drivers?
This is drivers.
Yeah, okay. So how many, what's the, what's our employment in February of '20 versus in September of '22 when, when the service is up, you know, at about the same level? Are we, our driver count is the same or is, is the composition of it different? Or, I mean, I'm having a hard time understanding why we're having service levels here when we probably had at least as many drivers back then. Something's not equating for me.
So when, so if you look at the So when, so if you look at the red line back in January of 20, was when we were sort of quote, "normal." We took a hiring break for about a year for Dial Ride, for any drivers during the pandemic. So all the way up, our first hiring post pandemic or post 2020 was February of 21. So we thought, well, okay, we'll bring in our people, we'll do what we normally do. Then we had the problem of being able to attract candidates. And so as the people left in the normal process, you know, through attrition or retirements, which there were more retirements in 21 than normal, because a lot of our full time people just reached retirement age. We really couldn't keep up with attrition at that time. And we just now, May of this year, started getting sort of catching up, but it's taking us a long time to catch up because people are just leaving. So overall, total driver counts are lower now than they were then.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, that was a long answer, but.
No, that, I had lost you in the, in, in your explanation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. But again, positively, if you look at those last three hiring events, we're attracting people, they're coming in the door, we're getting them through, they're, they're getting trained. I, I feel we're in a positive place for the moment compared to where we were, but we're still playing catch up. What was that? Sure, sure, yeah. Sure. So I don't know if anybody else, any other questions? Mush mount there.
I don't see any other questions.
Oh, and no, no updates in my grant table. Sorry, I forgot about that.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any old business in the room today? Seeing none. Is there any new business in the room today? Seeing none. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn today's Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pishmo. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Mcme. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Mcme, Nunley. Pismo, yes. Cheats, Stanger, yes. Swanson, Zibble.
Yes.
And Nunley. To adjourn. To adjourn.
Oh, do you?
I'm sorry.
Well, we had.
That's fine. I'll.
We can, I mean, by, by a two thirds vote of the board, essentially, you could reopen the session to come back.
It's fine with me.
Okay, sure. Okay, so let's call it, is, let's call a vote to reopen the session, please. Trudy, can you please call the roll?
Mcme.
Ms. Nunley had business for the new business section, but she was in the restroom.
Is that, yes, Donna?
Nunley?
Yes.
Pismo?
Yes.
Stanger?
Sure.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, unanimating. We are reopened. Ms. Nunley, we will go to the new business section where you have something to bring up because we jumped the gun.
Can I just, I, at some point, it doesn't have to be next month, but can we do, relook at fair wage or fair increases or what that looks like over the past couple of years? You know, if we haven't done it since 2009, you know, by the time they would be implemented in 2015 years, you know, to look at that, I just, I'm just interested in a report on that, so.
Oh, sure. Do you want us to look, you want us, we can give you a history and then do you want like a, if the board was considering a fair increase, like a recommendation or anything like that?
Yeah, if you do or don't recommend it.
Okay.
Either or.
Sure, we can, we can, yeah, we can take a look at that.
A review on that.
Sure.
Sorry.
Can I add to that just a little bit?
Sure.
Trends in the industry would, as part of that would be helpful.
Sure. Do you have any, so usually when we do trends, we do Ohio and surrounding states. Is that, does that work? Okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, any other new business? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn today's Board of Trustees meeting? Motion made by Ms. Nunley, seconded by Ms. Mcme. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Mcme. Nunley?
Yes.
Pismo?
Yes.
Cheats. Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson? Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. See you next month.
On the 19th.
On the 19th, yes.